Thank you, Dr. Kreider. Then I will call to order the October 13th, 2020 meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors. As usual, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Joneswick, do you have, can you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Sure, absolutely. Okay. The pledge allegiance.
To apply.
The United States of America.
America.
To the public.
For which is stand one nation.
Under God.
Visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Secretary, will you please take the role of the board?
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Honschar.
Here.
Director Mendoza.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Russo.
Director Russo is not able to be here tonight?
Director Simsek.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Shriver.
Here. So there's a portion of our meeting at the very beginning where we invite the public to comment on any item that's on our agenda for the evening. So, Mr. Jones, is there anybody in queue that would like to ask a question about an agenda item tonight?
We don't have any at this time, but let me just remind how to do that. If there's anybody out there in the public that would like to speak, you may use the hand wave feature. That'll let us know that you have a question, so just go ahead and click that. That will be up in the bar along with your mute and start your video and things like that. So anybody at this time that has a question can go ahead and do that.
And I think also, if you'd like, Mr. Shriver, we can hold the public questions after we do the presentation of the reentry plan. There may be some, maybe some value in pushing that and waiting till after the presentation. I agree completely. If any other questions on any other agenda item, we can address those now, but otherwise, I agree, it would be much better to wait till after you share your thoughts.
Well, there are no hands either, so.
Great. Thank you. Moving on then, I'll, actually, Dr. Kreider, do you prefer to do your presentation now or do you want to wait until the plan later in the agenda? I was gonna have Mr. Joneswick go through and give his financial report, and then I was gonna do my presentation after that. Sounds great. Let me just report then, we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel, real estate issues, and potential litigation. And now, Dr. Kreider, your staff and your administrative reports. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shriver. Mr. Joneswick, did you want to provide your administrative report for finance, please?
Yes. Mr. Jones, are you able to, am I able to share my screen?
Oh, let me check. I forgot to. You can now.
If I am not, I can just.
You, you can.
I can now.
Yes.
Okay, I will do the share, share screen. Okay, first off, I'm going to just give our quick, our quick budget report. For as we are through the 1920 school year as of through the September month, we close our books at the end of September, October 1st. We have our audit begin to be wrapped up in October with our official numbers that will be wrapped into our AFR. I'll just go quickly through our expenses. At this moment, you can see by the spreadsheet to the column C is the 1920 expenditures. I believe we should end up right around this range of $27.9 million. We budgeted $29.5 million. You can see the big area of our purchase services. We had about $956,000 less in expenses based on the school year ending March 13th and some transportation tuition expenditures, not hitting the district this year. So that was, that was more our main savings, and we made some adjustments to busing that added to that also. So you can see we're at 27.9 at this point. Last year at this time, we wrapped up with about $28.3 million of expenditures, so we're $489,000 less than expenditures. As you can see, we're about $1.68 million less than we budgeted this year for the expenditures. If we go down into our revenues, we budgeted $28.8 million in revenue. We are at $29.5 million, that's the October. So if I go back into my September, September spreadsheet here, the wrap-up, you can see those expenditures right now are at the same, same number. Our revenues at this point are $27.67 million with revenues on budgeted $28.8 million last year. At this time, we had $28.765. As you can see from our October, we should bump once our adjusting entries are made, estimated right now of 29.5. So, so we'll be about the same as we were last year in over revenue. So we were about $600,000 over budgeted revenue last year. We expect to be about $600,000 over that. So we'll make some adjustments to that into funds, and that's where we expect to be at this point. So that's just our budget report. We're along where we expect to be. We should be in pretty good shape this year. And so I'll stop that share. So what we're looking at right now is with Dollar Bank, we have Dollar Bank present today, two representatives, Mr. Joseph Kristoff and Mr. Jeff Evans. They're gonna do a wrap-up. What, what, where we're at right now with our banking is PNC for years and years have given us zero fees. They have changed their fee structure, which has resulted in additional costs for the district. So what we have, we went out to a couple for, we didn't release an official RFP for this because it is a service. I reached out to Dollar Bank, an additional banking service, and saw what PNC could do for us. Well, PNC is going to give us zero fees through the end of the year. Through the proposals we received, I did, I felt Dollar Bank gave us one of the best options here, so I'm going to have Mr. Kristoff and Mr. Evans speak on that and just kind of tell us what Dollar Bank's willing to offer for us, and if the board would have any questions for them after, after they kind of go through the proposal they gave me. We'll go from there. And I'd like to thank them for being with us this evening.
Yes, can everyone hear me? Okay, good, thanks. Appreciate everyone having us here. My name is Joe Kristoff, and Jeff Evans and I are in the Treasury Department at Dollar Bank. Just for those who may not know, Dollar Bank is a local bank that's been in Pittsburgh area for 165-plus years under one ownership group. We are a private bank, we're not a public bank, which means we're a mutual bank. So, you know, deposit, depositors technically are the owners of our bank. And we're in the local area. I mean, we have a Crafton branch and many other branches, so I'm assuming, I think, a lot of you have heard of us, but if you haven't, you know, feel free to ask any questions around the general bank. We're very excited to be here, working with school districts and municipalities, authorities, something we've really put some emphasis on. And so what we're offering to the district, when Chris reached out to me, you know, he kind of asked what we can do, and Jeff and I, we put our, our heads together, and our proposal is three years, no, no fees for any banking services for Carlington School District. And then we're also in addition to the no fees for transactional services, and that could be anything you're currently doing. You know, checks in, checks out, ACH deposits, I mean, a lot of those things that banks charge for, wires. We're just gonna go a flat no fee for any of those transactions. And then in addition to that, we're gonna, we propose to put you in a checking with interest. So that way, your, your funds that are in your checking accounts, regardless of which account these, regardless of the balance, will get an interest rate attached to the funds. That interest rate will be 10 basis points above the current PSLF fund, which is, as many of you have seen rates, unfortunately, it's .01. So our rate for you guys would be .11 currently, and it would fluctuate as that PSLF rate fluctuates. We'll always be 10 basis points above that. So that we have that, you know, as a three-year contract with you guys. You know, I think, you know, we've worked with a lot of other school districts, Chris knows, other municipalities, and, you know, it's been a really nice market for us. Jeff is the sales manager across, you know, Western PA, and I cover a lot of Western PA, so I would be the point of contact for any issues. We have a sales support team that covers the phones. I don't have any voicemail, so anything, you know, if I'm out on the road meeting with you guys or other customers, and you call my number, it'll roll directly to someone in Pittsburgh who will know you, answer questions for the business department, and move quickly to resolve any issues or, you know, any questions, whether it be from the basic login to, you know, other complicated issues that might come up. So our customer service is something I think that sets Dollar Bank apart, and I think something that the bank takes very seriously. Also, in addition to that, giving back to the community is also something that the bank, you know, many of you may have seen the Three Rivers Arts Festival sponsored by the bank and many, many other, you know, sponsorships and community events, and it's, I'm proud to be a part of a bank that does that. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very nice place frankly to work, and we're excited to, the potential to work with, with your school district. I'm open for questions, or Jeff, if you had anything else to add? Which I don't know if he's on, but. Chris, are there any, any other questions for me or anything you'd like to go over?
I had a question for you. I'm Mr. Frank. So. So you're saying basically the proposal that you're, you're offering is no, no fees for the first three years, right? And so I guess would be helpful for us to understand is, I guess in terms of kind of, how do y'all make your money and to what extent are you relying on? I guess you're making your money on relying on interest from our account balance?
Um, yeah.
The bank definitely has a, I mean, because we're a private bank, we, I guess maybe we function a little bit differently, but yeah, the account balances are a way, our bank only does two things, we do loans and deposits. So we don't have any other forms of revenue. We're not gonna sell you any other products or anything like that. So yeah, the deposits, we build so that we can loan them out to.
Okay, so when I look at it long-term, is it something that I can expect to escalate or is it sort of pretty stable? In terms of fees and that interest rate and, you know, the balance between our fee structure and then how you earn your money over a long period of time? Do you know what I mean?
Um. I thi, I think so. You know, over the long period, I think Dollar Bank were not as, I don't, I'm trying to answer that question because we don't really look at it that way. I mean, we, we want to get good customers in the door and work with our customers, and that is important to us because good customers stick around with us in the bank. You know, after three years, and certainly we can review again, see where we are, and do another, you know, sort of deal. But I don't know where the rates are gonna go. I mean, any, you know, they're probably gonna be low for a good period of time. So I, you know, did that answer your question, or do you have?
Kind of, so when, when we talk about kind of, so first three years, yeah, there's no banking fees. Long-term wise, to what extent does, do our banking fees rely on interest rates or your business model?
I see, so yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, I wouldn't, Jeff, I don't know if you have any more insight into that. I don't think if rates change or anything like that, our fees structure would change. I don't think that, so you're saying if the bank's doing well, or how, how would we change rates or something like that?
Correct, yeah. I mean, you know, we, you know, it's a, administratively, it's a big move to move from one bank to another, and then to say, well, three years with no, no banking fees, that's great, but, I mean, it's a big administrative burden to make a change from one bank to another. And so just understand, you know, that's great, no fees for three years, but what happens after three years? And it, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would review our position and go from there. I mean, you know, three years from now, I can't predict where rates will be or, you know, where the bank will be in terms of how they'll look at the fees in that situation. I think three years models some other school districts we worked with. So that's kind of where we set that number.
But your model doesn't, your, your profit model doesn't depend on, on, on banking fees, it, it, it's tied to investment returns and whatnot in cash in the bank as opposed to fees?
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, I think fees are important. I'm not frivory exactly to all of the profit modeling that the bank does, but I think that, you know, that I ultimately, I really, I think the bank wants good, solid customers to, that we can stick with and that can stick with us, and that we will, when we do that as a conservative, and they've done that over many years, and they've made, you know, loans to the right people, and, you know, have done that really well, that they've found that they've, they've made money by sticking with good customers. So the profit model for us, we need deposits in the door that, so that we can loan money because we don't have insurance or wealth management or any other lines of business that we rely on for various other points of revenue. So, you know, deposits are definitely very important for how we run our bank.
Thank you. Chris, any other, any other components of the dollar presentation you want to highlight?
I did pass, I did pass the proposal along to the board, so they're able to re, everybody should be able to review that. I, but Mr. Frank made some good points to that as far as the three-year. That was the best we could get with no fees. Now, if we were going to look at some type of structure to compound Mr. Frank's question, I can work with Joe Kristoff here to see where they could see where our fees could possibly be at at that point if they were no longer able to give us a fee-free structure and go from there. Unless the two gentlemen from Dollar Bank have anything else to add?
Hello?
Jeff, go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sorry, I guess I've been having some technical issues here on the phone. I just wanted to circle back on the question that was asked, you know, about profit model and kind of how we view that. So our model coming into 2020, you know, we, we were coming into the public funds market aggressive. That's, that's an area that we wanted to be in, you know, and Joe had mentioned community development is big for us and, and public funds, so really being visible in the community. So what the bank did, we set aside $100 million in 2020 that would allow us to go out and obtain public funds, deposits that, that, you know, we know need collateralized. And so that set aside, we were able to hedge for that, to answer your question, in the investment market as, as well as on the loan side. So we had that set aside in place that was, that was strictly not fee-driven. We were to obtain, you know, no fees on the opportunities that we came across that, that had that set aside of $100 million. So, you know, we certainly have a large CNI business that we deal with in the private sector. You know, that's where we are lending on credit lines and, and commercial real estate and the like. And so where we do derive fee income is on the loan side, obviously, and then on those deposits as well because those clients more often than not require more complex services, international payments, lockbox, things of that nature, which, which do generate fee income. So we are able to offset the need, if you will, for fee income on our public fund side with what we get in the, in the CNI market and the commercial real estate market. So really where we earn our fee income, to answer the question, and I think Joe touched on that, was, you know, through, through lending, and then also money earned at the Fed, you know, so when we draw deposits in, when the money is not lent out to our clients, you know, that money also earns, earns interest at the Fed. So that's, that's how that works. But yeah, to answer your question from a fee perspective, you know, historically, we've never charged public funds, you know, any, any sort of fees. We currently do not charge any of our school district clients or municipalities, boroughs, water authorities, the like. They have no fees, and they're in, you know, as Joe mentioned, it's hard to predict three years out, but, you know, I'm fairly certain that there will, will not be fees moving forward just simply because of, you know, the, the type of lending that we do and how aggressive we are. And again, it's not only in the, in the commercial market, but also in the residential real estate market. You know, we're a very heavy mortgage lender, particularly in the Pittsburgh market, but we also have locations in Cleveland and Virginia. So we're really growing, you know, the, the asset side of the bank, and that's really where we generate those fees and not so much on the liability side, on the deposit side. So hopefully that helps, you know, provide a little more insight for you to your question.
That's great, thank you, Jeff. That's very helpful.
Sure.
Any other questions from any of our board members? Okay, well, Mr. Kristoff, Mr. Evans, we greatly appreciate you joining us here this evening and then sharing your information about Dollar Bank. I know the board will take the information, synthesize it, and take a look at what the next step would be to, to potentially go into consideration here. You are more than welcome to, to step away from the meeting. We're gonna, we're gonna continue with, with our presentation, but again, we greatly appreciate you joining us here this evening.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Appreciate your time, have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank all of the, all of our family members, our, our parents, our students, faculty, staff, support staff for joining us here this evening to, to hear the recommendation as far as our next phase in, in our instructional model. Throughout the past several weeks, again, just a shout-out to everybody, to be quite honest with you, all of those entities that I just mentioned, our school board as well, for all the, the time and commitment that we've put into, one, into this plan, and then for our, our families at home, for the time that you have committed to, to working through the remote learning process, and for our teachers who have been doing an outstanding job in navigating their way through this as well. It's, it's certainly taken a lot of patience, and I appreciate all the conversations that I've had with, with many of our stakeholders across the board. I appreciate all your questions, I appreciate all your concern, and I think in the end, it helps us move, move through this process together and, and make our way through this in a positive direction. So, Mr. Jones, if you could, if you could please click on the reopening plan. And at this time also, just take note, the last I checked, we had 87 people joining us on YouTube and approximately 73 joining us here in the Zoom platform for a total of close to 160 people with us here this evening. Next slide, please. So as far as the preparations for Phase Two, some of the things that we've, we've taken a look at just as a quick wrap-up, going back to really into July, we made the decision to move with our remote model. We made that transition September 15th. We continued that, and we made the commitment at that time, out of value for consistency of delivering instruction to all of our students using a remote platform, and looked to continue that model until the end of October. And we informed the community that we would come up with, with an update within, prior to the next board meeting. So here we are at that point. Originally, when we took a look at our models and we look at our, our health and safety plan, called for two different approaches, actually, three, had a remote, had a hybrid, and also had a traditional. Much of that language now, many of us are becoming more accustomed to. In the very beginning, it was hard to navigate through some of that language. But I think now, as we listen to the news and we hear different reports from others, other school districts coming out and listening to different models that they've come out with, I think we're becoming more familiar as a community with, with that information. So on the next slide, coming out with, with my recommendation here to, to the board for their approval for tonight, to take into consideration, takes a little bit into consideration several things that we've, we've looked at over the past several weeks. One of the things was a survey that we sent out. We recognized a little bit more than 50% of our individuals replied to that survey. It's not 100%, but when looking at statistical data, once you hit that threshold of about 25 to 30% of survey data, the data starts to narrow in and becomes very useful in regard to making larger decisions. That time, we had 60% of our families who are interested in a traditional model to move forward to the next step. We also learned that we have 40% of our students will rely upon district transportation, which I think lends itself to many of the concerns that many parents and families have in regard to transportation, getting their children back and forth to school, which is a good sign. We greatly appreciate the number of parents who have reached out and indicated that they can provide transportation both to and from school, and that goes across grade levels of K through 12. So we took some time to, to look at the data a little bit deeper into individual grade levels, K through 3, 4 through 6, 7 through 12, to synthesize the data a little bit, to understand and try to recognize some patterns. And to be quite honest with you, the, the patterns were very similar, K through 12, as far as where these numbers fell in regard to, to comfort levels coming back to school. Transmission rates in, in our area are, are very good in comparison to some other communities and also into Allegheny County in general. So there again, we greatly appreciate the diligence that all of us have taken in protecting one another. I think wearing masks and social distancing and staying away from others when you're feeling ill has had a huge impact on our low rates in our area. Operationally, from a district perspective, we've been able to safely offer extracurricular activities to our students. We've had our marching band, we've had our cheerleaders, we've had our flaglines, we've had our football, volleyball, and also with soccer that we've been up and running. To this point, we have not had any positive transmission rates among any of our students, whether they're participating in athletics or activities. And in speaking to Allegheny County Department of Health, we have not had any positive rates among any of our school-aged students who attend Carlington as well. 98% of our staff are healthy and are, are ready to report back to work. Not report back to work, they, they've been working hard, but report back fully to, to have students in the classroom. Educational value, I think we all recognize, and I think the, the board has, has made the commitment from very early on that they certainly recognize that nothing replaces that face-to-face interaction that teachers have with their students on a day-to-day basis, not only from an instructional standpoint, but then also from a social and emotional well-being standpoint as well. The district provides a lot of services to our students, we care deeply about them, and we recognize that the best way that we can provide those services is, is in a face-to-face environment. So that's why on the, on the next slide here, the recommendation is to bring students back. And if you could flip to the next slide, please. Is to bring students back into a face-to-face. We're looking at doing that again, furthering in that phasing information. And I think what you'll recognize from this recommendation is it takes a little bit of elements from a traditional model and a little bit of an element from a hybrid model in regard to the number of days that students are reporting to school on a weekly basis. It also provides us with some flexibility moving forward. So we're looking at bringing back our K through 3 students, students who are enrolled in kindergarten through third grade. We're looking at bringing them back into the classroom four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We're looking to begin that model on Thursday, October the 29th. Grades 4 through 12, looking for students to report two days a week. That would be on Tuesday and Thursday, and then working with a remote learning environment on. That would be on Tuesday and Thursday, and then working with a remote learning environment on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and beginning that model on Thursday, November five. Uh, also K through twelve, which affects about twenty students district-wide. We're looking at our life skills and autistic support students, bringing them back to the classroom. Again, also on a four-day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday uh basis. And as we remain committed throughout the process, we we uh informed our parents throughout is that we will always have remote learning available to our students regardless of where we are throughout the course of the school year. Um, and I'll get a little bit more into detail as far as what that will look like for students electing to stay at home. And then our goal with this plan, um, the difference between this plan and a hybrid plan, uh, this allows us to transition a little bit more quickly into a full five-day return to school, into more of that traditional model of providing instruction as opposed to making that stop at a hybrid model. Um, using this model, we can add in instructional days as we move forward and collect additional information. We could find that adding in uh to grades four through twelve, adding in one day a week, adding in two more days a week, uh, moving straight to five days per week of instruction based on uh what we learned throughout the process and bring our students back together uh into the schoolhouse. Next slide, please. So getting down a little bit more of a a granular level for each of the individual groups here. So for life skills and autistic support, um, as I mentioned, those students reporting four days per week. In this particular case, uh, just based on the model, the students will receive face-to-face instruction for the majority of their coursework. However, due to some scheduling constraints, for example, if one of our uh students reports to uh a classroom that's providing instruction uh on an off day, uh, where that teacher is providing remote instruction to other groups of students, our students will participate in remote learning within the classroom setting. So we'll still be able to deliver the the instruction. Um, that's for very few cases and uh hits more at the uh at the high school level and a little bit more at the four through six, but K through three uh for our life skills and autistic support should be able to receive all their face-to-face instruction uh throughout the course of the week uh on those four days. Uh, Wednesday, for all all groups here, uh, we will continue with our learning from home using the same exact remote model that we're currently offering right now. Uh, we'll maintain that exact same schedule, and that will occur every Wednesday. We're looking for uh this model to begin on the twenty-ninth. And for this group of students, we'll have some of our staff members reach out to individual families to uh help go through the processes uh and answer some more specific questions that that uh parents uh may have for for our particular students here. Next slide, please, moving on to K through three and a little bit of what that looks like. Uh, K through three students, again, reporting those four days a week. Students will receive face-to-face instruction for all of their coursework. And what we'll look to do, and I'll get into some other uh safety accommodations here in a little bit as well, uh, but looking for students to remain in their classroom for the majority of the time in grades K through tree, K through three, uh, looking at some of our special uh courses such as uh music and other areas to move into the classroom and do the rotation. So our students stay in the same classroom, um, and then our two cheers, teachers will go through and do some rotating. There's gonna be some certain circumstances where we can't make that happen, uh, but we remain committed to maximizing uh and minimizing the amount of time that our that our students are moving through our buildings. And if we can have our teachers rotate, that will help uh reach those goals. Um, students will report directly to their classrooms uh after they exit the bus. Presently, uh, over the past years, students have arrived at the elementary level at approximately eight oh seven and then not able to to get into classrooms until about eight thirty. So we're looking at adjusting our bus schedules uh so that when students report to school, the uh drop-offs will be somewhere around eight twenty-five is what we want to try to look for. We'll work very closely with our uh transportation carrier to to get our students there around eight twenty-five. That way, they get off the bus, we'll screen their temperature, get them right into classrooms so that we can avoid students um being placed in in larger facilities such as uh gymnasiums or uh indoor auditoriums prior to moving on to the instructional day. That, I think, will also uh help greatly. Uh, as far as lunch service, we're looking to use a variety of spaces for K through three in both of our buildings at at Crafton Carnegie. Uh, we look to use the lunchroom itself, also look to use uh gymnasium at uh Carnegie, and then also some class, additional classrooms uh at Crafton to help break down the numbers um in our cafeteria. So at the elementary level, as far as uh sizing, we're looking to uh operate our cafeteria at about one-third of the capacity so we can start to spread students out uh much easier and using different venues then for uh providing lunch in different areas as well, uh, so we can safely provide those. Uh, Wednesday, once again, for K through three, that'll be their their day that they uh work in the remote setting. And again, this model begins then on uh Thursday, the twenty-ninth. Next slide, please. Looking then at uh four through six, four through six is uh similar to seven through twelve, but I kept these these separate because there are some some small differences there. Uh, students are reporting twice a week. It's looking at uh Tuesday, Thursday. They'll receive face-to-face instruction for all their coursework. At the four through six level, we do uh work with students in different grouping levels and which does require students to transition from one classroom to another. So there will be some more movement of students at the four through six level as opposed to uh K through three. However, our specials will still continue to rotate uh to keep students in classrooms. Uh, but we will have students uh changing classes periodically for different level types of of coursework that we provide. Um, same type of uh plans there with uh scheduling for transportation and arriving about fifteen minutes late. We'll send some updated information out. I know we sent our bus schedules out already. We'll adjust and monitor those, and that's just gonna be at the elementary level um only. Again, for four through six, we're looking at cafeterias and gymnasiums and classrooms to provide lunch. And then Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is when our students in grades four through six would remain at home, and they would use the exact same model that we're currently offering right now as far as starting time and ending time uh for instruction. This model, we're looking to begin then on Thursday, November fifth. That's one week separated from from when our K through three students will will return also. Uh, next slide has seven through twelve. Seven through twelve is also very similar to the four through six with two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday. Uh, students will receive face-to-face for all their coursework. Naturally, at the high school level, we need to have much more transition time uh with the specific course nature that uh that students are enrolled in, so there will be movement in the hallway. Uh, go through our our safety plan again, which I went through uh back in July also, um, here in a little bit. Uh, also then, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, our seven through twelve students will remain at home, get remote instruction. Uh, and then this this model begins on Thursday, November five. So as far as an overcap for for all three uh sections there, uh, K through three, looking at four days per week. It's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, and then our four through twelve is two days a week with a third with a Tuesday, Thursday, and then remote learning on Monday, Wednesday, Friday for that group. Next slide, please. So a quick overview, this is just a a little three-week snapshot, just to give you a a basic idea of how things start to overlap and what they look like. Um, that week there is the last week of October, October twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. October twenty-nine, that's the Thursday where we look to bring back, what I'm proposing to bring back is our K through three students and also our life skills autistic support students. Uh, they would report physically to the schoolhouse. Uh, grades four through twelve, at that time, would still be operating under remote learning. On a Friday, we run with the same model. The following Monday, same model. Uh, Tuesday, we have off for election day. Wednesday, throughout the whole process here, while we remain in this phase, we'll be remote learning for all students. Then the following Thursday is when we bring back our four through twelve students. So uh, Thursday, November the fifth, is basically when we have the entire district reporting back to back to school at the same time on that Thursday. And at Friday, we go back to uh just uh K through three, life skills and uh autistic support students. Uh, and then also embedded into those the next three weeks, uh, November the eleventh, schools are closed for Veterans Day. There won't be any instruction provided uh in the remote environment. That takes us about a week or two shy of Thanksgiving break. Um, that, I think those first couple of weeks will give us a very solid understanding of how things are working in the schoolhouse, uh, what the safety protocols, how they are being implemented. Provides us opportunity to review our safety uh procedures and protocols um and make sure that we could take any look and and reconfigure anything that we would need to reconfigure. Uh, next slide, please. So start times at the elementary level, just to be clear with that, what we're going back to is that traditional model. So all elementary students, K through six, if they are physically reporting back to school. So for K through three, it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. For four through six, it's Tuesday, Thursday. Anytime we report back to school for face-to-face, school time, uh, reporting time is eight twenty-five. Instructional activities begin at eight thirty, and then dismissal time is right around three o'clock when we start dismissal procedures. Um, drop-off protocols uh and pickup protocols at the end of the school day will be communicated out by uh both of our elementary principals. Uh, they've both reconfigured some things, one just for for student flow throughout the building and also just to prepare for an increased number of parents who are going to be driving their their children to to school as well. So they'll share that information as far as some some drop-off locations. They did a terrific job thinking of the uh different types of logistics that go into a student drop-off and and student pickup. Uh, as far as remote instruction on those days where where no students are reporting to school, uh, once again, for the K through three students, that would just be on Wednesday. For our four through thick, four through six students, that would be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Then we follow the exact same uh remote learning schedule we're following right now, where instruction at the elementary level uh begins at nine AM. We went with that direction uh just based on the consistency of keeping things the way that they are. We have conscientious of the amount of screen time that our students are are having at home while they're receiving instruction. Um, and so when we're face-to-face, elementary, instruction begins at eight thirty. Uh, when they're working remotely, instruction begins at nine o'clock. The next uh slide takes a look at the secondary level, and so start times at the secondary level. Once again, we go back to traditional phase, just like it was uh last year prior to March. Uh, the face-to-face instruction, reporting time at the secondary level is seven twenty-five. We have homeroom activities that begin at seven thirty. Uh, so students therefore uh report by uh seven twenty-five, get them into the schoolhouse and move up to uh to homeroom and and start the instructional day. Dismissal time stays stays the same at at two oh seven. And again, uh, Mr. Lachlan will share some information in regard to uh drop-offs and pickup uh routines at at the high school level. Um, as far as student drivers, we did share uh previously that we'd be allowing more students to drive without charging any uh additional fees for uh driving to school. However, students will still need to register their vehicles. Um, within that, that uh helps significantly with the number of students using district transportation uh as well. Remote instruction on those days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We'll continue to use the exact same schedule that we're currently working with as where instructional time then begins at eight AM. Next slide, please. So getting to the portion, we do have a, we have a population of families that are not comfortable sending their children to school at this time for a variety of reasons and certainly understandable. And this was an area where we made the commitment to make sure that we were still going to provide, um, I think, more than adequate uh instructional activities for our students uh while they remain at home uh throughout the pandemic. So remote learning will always be available throughout the course of the school year. Students will still continue to access the curriculum using their Chromebooks that they received very beginning of the school year. Uh, Google Classroom from our teachers will be updated on a regular basis with instructional activities. And live streaming will also take place out of our classrooms, and the live streaming may look different uh depending on grade level. Uh, again, we want to take into consideration the amount of screen time that uh that our students are being exposed to. Um, I would see the biggest difference there would be the difference between the elementary level and the secondary. At the secondary, seven through twelve, our teachers will uh live stream their classes for the forty-two minute period, and our teachers will be able to communicate and they'll have uh technology equipment, microphones that will allow them uh the recording and the uh uh the the access of of the audio portion will be very clear for our students so they can hear at home. Uh, teachers may not always be on screen, but at least they'll be able to have that access and be able to keep up with uh with activities. At the elementary level, certainly, we're not gonna stream the entire school day. Uh, teachers will communicate with their families uh as to what portions of the day will be livestreamed when they have certain events going on. That'll be clearly published in advance. Uh, and I think for much of the part, it'll make it make a lot of sense as to which activities they're livestreaming. The only difference when we're livestreaming while while students are in session, so again, students in session at the K through three level, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the four through six, while students are in session on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're not going to record those lessons and post those up um on the Google Classroom. However, like I said, um, students working from home will have a clear, clear access to all of the classroom activities through through live streaming. Um, as far as uh other components there, when we're working uh on face-to-face, um, face-to-face instruction, elementary, once again, begins at uh eight thirty, secondary begins at seven thirty. And when students are learning remotely, we'll follow the exact same schedule that we're that we're currently following right now. And food service throughout the entire school year, regardless of whether or not uh students are learning from home or in the schoolhouse, uh, meals will be provided to our students for free throughout the course of the school year. Next slide, please. So moving forward, as I alluded to a little bit earlier, uh, we're gonna take a look at all of our safety protocols as we have students report physically back to school. We'll take a look at our practices, uh, go through, make adjustments where we feel we need to make those to make sure that learning is accessible to all our students in a safe manner. Um, we'll take a look at the days that we're offering, and based on the the environment, we'll be able to add in instructional days. We'll be able to, depending on situations, uh, decrease instructional days. So as I said before, for uh grades four through twelve, we may uh start off and add Mondays and Fridays and have them report four days a week. We may just simply add on a Friday. Uh, depends on how things are going and and uh all that communication that we have with the Allegheny County Department of Health will help us uh move forward and make decisions. Uh, certainly, we'll be monitoring number of cases, uh, not only in the school, but then also uh in our local communities. Uh, our three communities, as I mentioned before, the positivity rates and the incident rates uh are low. Uh, I think as far as everything going there, Allegheny County, uh, Department of Health, and in speaking to them, uh, remain optimistic about the future, and they're very satisfied. And I think you've seen just based on their recent actions as far as eliminating some of the restrictions that were previously in place and increasing gathering sizes a little bit along the way, um, that the mitigation efforts that they're putting in place are working and they're having effect. Uh, so that's very positive signs that we're getting from from Allegheny County as well. Uh, they've been outstanding throughout the course of the last several months, uh, being able to to access them. Quite honestly, they're they're a phone call away, they're an email away, they pick up very quickly um and are able to help provide assistance and and guidance to local school districts, which has been uh greatly appreciated. Uh, next slide, please. Next several slides start to move into our health and safety plan. All of this information, like I said, was covered uh in July. I'll move through it a little bit faster than what I did in July, but uh does take into consideration uh all the aspects that were required of the Pennsylvania Department of Education for our health and safety plans, cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, uh, certainly are are a huge component. Um, as mentioned previously, with uh with our cleaning and sanitizing, uh, all surfaces are are being cleaned on a regular basis. That's occurring right now. We've purchased extra equipment such as floor scrubbers, electrostatic sprayers, uh, a lot of different types of things to help clean, keep the environment clean. We took a look at no-touch surfaces, and to this point, we've uh installed uh a a great deal, very significant number of uh no-touch toilets and also water filling stations in our hallways. Our HVAC system is working at full capacity. We just had a train come in and and uh do some inspections to make sure we're in good shape. And class classrooms at the elementary level, our our students over the past couple of years have always been cleaning their desks. They'll continue to do that, uh, and that will also, that program will also be expanded into into the high school level as well. Uh, we'll be able to increase and expand the uh frequency in which our our buses are clean. And then in our classrooms, we'll limit the uh the sharing of of materials. Next slide, please. Uh, classroom learning spaces, uh, certainly, that's that's a part, I think, that it's of great concern. We take a look at um maximizing the distance between our students. Uh, Mr. McDate, our director of facilities, has been working very closely with uh building principals and also with classroom teachers uh to assist them in 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 clearing out uh different areas of their classroom, moving furniture around. Uh, we've rented storage pods so that we can take some of our uh classroom materials and place them outside of the classroom to create more space and more distance between between our students. Um, that spacing aspect at our elementary levels, um, I'll let Mr. McDay uh share some information here at the end if he 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 wants to, uh, but we've been able to create some some good space at our elementary level. Um, I would say average at elementary level is a good four and a half to five feet separation between our students uh with our uh with the classroom desks and their seating. Uh, we also purchased some new furniture uh to help create that space in grades uh kindergarten and first grade to get new desks in that are easily to be reconfigured. In the past, we had uh tables that students were receiving instruction from, so the purchase- So the purchase of the new individual tables will certainly help. But then we also plan for the future with some of those tables and some of that furniture that will be able to be reconfigured into working collaborative spaces that that are younger students are accustomed to and work well from. Certainly as far as our busing goes, we're going to continue to encourage our our parents to provide transportation for their children. That will help decrease the number of students on our bus. We'll take a look again at the patterns throughout our our hallways and take a look for areas of congestion. And then take a look at different ways that we can help mitigate those with with a variety of strategies there. Next slide, please. Cafeteria and other settings, certainly large group gatherings. We will not have the the large group assemblies or any of any of that type of activities for our students. Cafeteria and food service areas will be at reduced seating capacity, as I mentioned. At the high school level, as far as our cafeteria will be operating at about sixty-six percent of that capacity. At the elementary level, the cafeterias will be about a third of their capacity. And then we expand at the high school, some seating out into the hallway. We do have, as many of you know, at the senior high school, we have round tables. Round table, six foot round tables that we're seating across from one another, may not be the most ideal. So that when we are eating, one of the parts of that is that students are are unmasked while they eat, very similar to how they're working in the in restaurants and and areas like that. The concern is that at the at the student level, you're not eating with your family as you would at a restaurant. So what we've also ordered is Plexiglas that will be separating students at the six foot round tables. That Plexiglas then will protect students sitting across each other from a six foot distance. It also provide protection from students seating at about four and a half feet from one side to the other of those round tables as well. So that will help mitigate everything when when students are unmasked during food service times. We'll limit the amount of exposed food during cafeteria service. We'll increase the the grab and go types of meals. Health and Phys Ed will focus on fitness and wellness types of activities outside. And I think recess is up here on the next next slide as well. If not, it's on the following, or maybe, maybe it's not on. I'll talk about that, though. Some hygiene practices, certainly we want to make sure that we encourage our students to continue to wash their hands, continue to use sanitizer throughout the course of the school day. We do have cleaning stations and sanitation stations set up throughout all of our buildings. At the elementary level, we'll set up hand washing schedules so that we're making sure that our students are staying clean. Good hygiene, making sure that they clean their hands before they go get any snacks or any any food. And then at all levels, as we mentioned before, we'll keep the desk clean during the school day and then we'll also go through every day in the evenings and make sure that our our building is properly sanitized. Next slide, please. As far as monitoring students, monitoring students, we'll we'll take a look. On Sundays and Wednesdays, we'll send out reminders to all of our parents just to remind them of the common signs of symptoms of COVID. And asking them very strongly to make sure that if your child is experiencing any signs or symptoms. If they are feeling ill, one of the biggest mitigation strategies is to stay at home. I think that the strength of our program here that we're offering, children can stay at home if they're ill and continue to keep up with their academics. So even if it's, even if it's a small issue, we would strongly advise our parents to keep their children at home. Have them learn remotely for a day or two until they their symptoms, even if it's just a common cold. Keeps things much more sanitized in our building. If individuals are symptomatic, we ask them to stay at home. We ask any parents to report. We get reports from Allegheny County Health Department of positive test rates. That gets reported directly to us, but any seasonal flu or any other major health issues, we ask you to report that to our school nurses. We'll do our temperature screenings before children come into the schoolhouse as well. We have both handheld and also stationary devices that we can do to help speed that process along. Any students who are exhibiting symptoms throughout the course of the school day, be sent down to the school nurse. We have isolation rooms in each of our three buildings. That have been designed to hold anywhere between three to six students, depending on building. So if we do have ill students, we will also want to make sure that the parents are available to be able to come pick their students or their children up at school. Within a very short period of time to to help with keeping any types of infections out of the building. And then re-admission into the schoolhouse is case by case kind of thing. All depending on the types of symptoms that individuals are they have, we'll work with families on an individual basis in regard to when students return. As we mentioned, one of the bigger strengths here, remote learning is always available and it's a strong option for for all of our students. Next slide, please. A lot of different postings of signs throughout the building, making sure students remember to keep clean, making sure that students remember to wear their masks. Making sure that students remember to keep to the right as they as they walk through hallways. And as I mentioned there, as far as recess and physical education recess component to it. We'll try to cohort our students as much as possible. There will be assigned seating at at lunches so that we can help mitigate the risk of 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 more spread onto students by changing seats from one day to the next. Students will be assigned seats. And then when they go out for recess, that will help with the with the cohorts, keeping students together into smaller groups. And we've worked on coming up with different types of activities for recess. Recession is not going to be the same kind of thing that that we've always remembered. Recession will be, in many cases, it'll be a fresh air break, getting students outside in an unmasked environment. Where they can stay six feet away from each other, get some good fresh air into the lungs, which is very healthy. And also create some types of intermural activities. The teachers will lead and be able to get small groups of students back into classrooms. And will help go through a rotation process of of limiting the number of students that that are out at recess. We won't have any playground equipment being used, but we will have different types of games that are suitable for certain age levels and grade levels that students can participate in. And hopefully be able to to take a nice little break and enjoy themselves during a recess. Next slide, please. Naturally, as far as throughout the processes, we shared, we have different types of programs available for our staff as well. As indicated, we have ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our our staff is is healthy and able to to report to work during COVID. And with a lot of different supports in place for our children as well, through the Allegheny County Health Network at Carnegie Elementary School, we have the Chill Room. We have Wesley Family Services, we have our school counselors, our psychologists, and then also our school nurses. All of those individuals are extremely helpful during this time as well. Next slide. Use of masks, it'll be very important again that I think the the strongest mitigation strategies is, as I talked about, keeping your child at home if they are ill. Creating maximum space between students in the schoolhouse. And then also wearing a mask. When you combine those three, three things together, creates a very solid and and strong mitigation strategy that that we can incorporate. It just requires everybody to do their part. While they're in the schoolhouse, everybody wears a mask. If you don't have a mask, we have thirty thousand masks that we can hand out to students if they forget their their mask at home. If their mask gets dirty at school, we will have plenty of masks to help to help students out with. We also have shields available. We have at least two shields for every student throughout the course of the school year at this time. Students want to wear an an extra layer of protection. Or students can can wear a shield during masking breaks and still remain safe. That will help add an an extra layer of protection for for our students as well, so they can double up with with a mask and also with a with a shield if they would like to. And as far as district transportation, that's also a requirement that once stepping foot on district transportation, need to have a mask on as well. We encourage our students then at bus stops, remain socially distanced from one another, comfortable wearing a mask outside as as well. At all times, certainly helps reduce the reduce the the incident rates. Next slide, please. In the event we have a confirmed case, and I think as as many of you realize, as you take a look at other schools, it's inevitable, it will happen. That we will have positive cases. They come into the school and all of the safety planning procedures that we have in place is to limit that spread of the of the infection. If individuals are are infected with with COVID, as we've mentioned, it's very important that you you let us know right away. Your child stays home from school for ten days and then must also, within those ten days, be symptom free for seventy-two hours, period of three days. And that's without any fever reducing medication. So as far as looking at, and this is a consistent rule across the board for state of Pennsylvania. Is that students remain home for those those ten days. You want to try to isolate, quarantine yourself from other family members if possible to prevent the spread at home. And then report back to school once those symptoms have subsided for at least seventy-two hours. Now we'll also have contract contact tracing in place. So if a child is ill, they do report to school that we've learned about. In in some cases, could be a day or two after that we learned that a child was infected. We do our contact tracing. That's why it's important for us to have seating charts throughout and seating charts at at lunch. And so we know who our children are sitting with. So when we go through, do we do the contact tracing? We work very closely with Allegheny County, to be quite honest with you. Even in our lunchrooms, based on the mitigation strategies we have in place. I would be willing to bet that if a child has COVID and they are sitting with another student at the lunch table, that Allegheny County would not have the other children quarantined based on the amount of procedures that we have in place, the mitigation strategies that we have in place. But we will consult directly with them for their advice. They have moved away from quarantining entire classrooms. If there is a child sick, they look very closely at distance between children and masking and making individual decisions based on that. And that's where I think many of you have started to see over the 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 course of the last several months. There's been changes in recommendations, there's been changes in procedures. That will continue to change and some some will be more restrictive and some cases may be less restrictive. But we work very closely with Allegheny County to work with them. To keep our, to be fully transparent and to to keep individuals informed, we will keep a tracker on our website. So the parents can take a look at the number of positive cases that we've had throughout the course of the school year. And we'll also include on that tracker, the number of recent cases as far as the ones that are are currently being quarantined. And be able to track that. So parents at home who are not comfortable sending their child to to school can monitor that site. And as they monitor that site, if signs are good, help you make the decision on whether or not it's safe to send your child back to school. And also provides documentation for other individuals as well, is if we do have an outbreak or spike and we need to shut down one of our buildings or all of our buildings. That rationale, I think, will be very clearly communicated as to why we had to to go through and make those decisions. We don't have a clear cut formula for closing individual schools. That's again consultation with Allegheny County. We'll work very closely with them as far as the the different types of recommendations that they have in regard to keeping schools open. Next slide, please. And just as a, just as review, everything that we've put into place this year, we've designed it to be engaging, we've designed it to be flexible, we've designed it to be safe. What I've tried to take into consideration is all of our families. As I mentioned, sixty percent of our families feel comfortable sending their children back to school under a traditional model. I believe there's twenty percent of our twenty percent of our families that, under no circumstances, whether it was hybrid or traditional, were interested in sending their children back to school. So we have a group of of twenty percent that's kind of there in the middle also that I think will have some decisions and hopefully tonight's presentation helps that twenty percent make a decision on whether or not they choose to send their children to school. And here again, different from other school districts, I know other districts have asked for nine week commitments. We're not asking for that. We want to create that flexibility for our parents and and our families to to make those decisions. We just ask that they remain in contact with us. We'll be sending out additional information to get some more accurate numbers as far as the number of children we should expect on first day of school on in October here, we bring kids back into into the schoolhouse. That is, I believe, the end of my presentation. Mr. Jones, is that no more slides, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So at this time, we'll move back to the portion for either public comment or also for any questions or general concerns in the spirit of maintaining with our our board language, we'd like to hold each of our comments and questions to to three minutes if possible. And Mr. Jones, I do see we have at least two in the queue. And hopefully individuals have updated their Zoom at home and are able to to access. And if you have trouble accessing and being able to speak here this evening, you can also use the the chat feature. Or if you have more specific questions and you feel comfortable sending us an email, please don't hesitate to do that either.
Yeah. So are we, are we going to go into then the public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, just as a reminder to all that have raised their hands. You will need to state your name and your address in order to properly get the record. And we'll start with the first one we have here, which is Richard Sutchen, I believe. Sir, you are permitted to speak. You will have to unmute yourself. And Richard, if you just unmute yourself, you would be able to, you will be able to talk. Okay, well, I will come back to you, Richard, if you want to talk again. We'll move on to Rebecca Schaefer next. And Rebecca, you are now permitted to speak. Just unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Rebecca Schaefer and I'm at two and nine Seventh Avenue in Carnegie. And I only had one question. With it being they're going back. Is there going to be like questions asked to the families like about their traveling as well? Because like if we're putting our kids in with like a bunch of kids, like eighteen to twenty students again. Like, we don't know where their families traveled to and stuff and we're putting our kids more at higher risk. So is there going to be like questions asked about that if people traveled certain places or certain areas?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Mr. Schaefer. Thank you. As you have recognized also, Pennsylvania has expanded their the number of states that are on their travel list. And we have been using that strategy with with both staff and with our athletes in regard to to reporting that. It will be something that we will put on the weekly information that will come out on Sundays and Wednesdays, just as a reminder that if families traveled outside of the state, we do ask them to to self quarantine. Certainly that's something that that uses the honor system and it's not something that we can very easily enforce. And it's not something that that we would look to to investigate, to be honest with you. Would be something that that we would remind parents to make the responsible decision that in the event they travel to an unsafe area. And also in regard to that, Allegheny County has provided advice on that and and has provided latitude for for members when they travel to different areas is to as far as risky behaviors of, again, being in large gatherings of groups. Going out to nightclubs, going out to restaurants. Those types of things that they ask us to take into consideration when going through traveling and then making restrictions coming back. It's a good question, but it's very extremely difficult to to go through and enforce.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Jones, we have somebody else? And as we're waiting for another person, one, one question that was typed in. Question more for the high school level, if a student decides to stay remote, will their remote learning schedule change in accordance to the face to face class schedule? If so, when will they get If so, when will they get a new schedule reflecting that new class time schedule? So what we did in regard to that is when students are physically reporting to school, they will follow at the high school level. As this question is posed for, classes begin at 7:30. They would follow their 42 minute class schedule. So if a child is learning from home, they would follow the new bell schedule. So they follow the exact same schedule that they're following in order right now with period 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. The only difference would be is when the, when the class is actually meeting on time. There would just be a bell schedule in order to, to keep up with instruction. But then on the days when all students are learning remotely on Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the high school level, they'll use the exact same timeframe that we're currently using right now. Second question that was typed in. Why aren't all special education students going back four days a week? Aren't their struggles just as important as those with other special needs? Yes, absolutely, they are. Unfortunately, the model that we're using right now, because our special education, special education students, broadly speaking, attend many different classes in a face to face environment. We will be able to get all of our special education students back on a four day rotation when we bring our other students back in with us as well. So unfortunately, at this time, it's just not, it's not possible to run a schedule to meet those, those needs as well. As far as students being a part at the high school level, students being a part at the high school level, we're able in many of our classes, Mr. McDade, I don't know if you're, if you're able to address this one as far as that spacing issue. I know Mr. McDade's been working very closely with, with our teachers, both elementary and secondary. I'm not sure if you want to give an update at the, at the secondary level.
You hear me?
Yes.
At the high school, we're trying to get six feet. Some of the rooms with the amount of students in it is going to be at least four feet separation in those rooms. The elementary schools are the same. We're trying to get six feet distance in all the rooms. So that's our goal. I think the minimal, the minimal distance in the rooms will be four feet with the student enrollment in the rooms. We're trying to get six in every area.
And very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDade. Seventh graders being transitioned. That's something certainly that we're taking into consideration with our seventh grade students. They've not been up to the junior, senior high school. I know that Mr. Lockham will take many steps along with our teachers to help orient our students in the process. And a lot of that will be front loaded with communications over the next couple of weeks. And then also just reporting to school, being able to work with individual teachers. Certainly not going to be the same as it was in the past with different orientation programs. But certainly make every effort to make sure that our students are ready and prepared to go. Question about having two children, a second and a fifth grader. Can I keep my second grader on the fifth grade schedule? If you would like to keep your second and your, on the fifth grade and have your child report on those two days and have them go remote on Monday, Wednesday, Friday to remain consistent. Yes, those are individual things that we can, we can make work. And that's the whole part of the plan here is coming up with something that's very flexible and meets the needs of many of our, many of our parents and our families. And Mr. Jones, are you able to pull up, pull up somebody else here?
Yes, Deborah. You are permitted to speak. I see you unmuted yourself. So just your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Deborah Sedegus and I live at 38 Elmwood Street in Crafton. And I have a two part question. So well, first I'd like to thank all of you for the effort that you've put into this. I can't imagine how difficult it has been and I appreciate that you're trying to accommodate everyone's needs as much as possible. So I think the first part of my question was answered. I just wanted to know if this was like an all or nothing commitment type thing, like right now, if we're not comfortable sending our children back and we decide in January, maybe we are comfortable. Can we do that or vice versa if we do send our children back at the new start date and they decide they're not comfortable with the new school environment? Can we pull them out and bring them back to remote? And I think Mr. Carter answered that for me. But to piggyback off of that question as well, I was wondering if there would be any details available per grade? For instance, you know, if we're not comfortable sending our children back right now after the first few weeks, could we get some kind of report that says, well, this is how many children are in the fourth grade class at Crafton Elementary? You know, this is what the day looks like and how often they move classes and things of that nature to help those parents who are not comfortable sending their children back. And maybe they would be more comfortable based on what the day looks like at school?
Yeah, I agree. I think parents will make decisions based on learning information as, as other students start to report back. So any information that we can provide to help, help parents make a more informed decision of their comfort level of coming back to school, we'll certainly look to, look to provide.
Okay. And the first part, it's not a commitment thing. It's not all or nothing if we.
You're right. You heard me right. Yep, you did. Yep.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Nicole McMurdo, you're next. You can unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Nicole McMurdo. I live at 188 South Grandview Avenue in Crafton. My first question is in regards to especially the, the older children in the junior, senior high school. When you're, when we do the remote learning, they're 30 minute classes, but in person, they'll be 45 minute classes. But the kids who choose to stay home will have 45 minute classes. My, one of my top concerns in all of this are kids who are trying to study for SATs, AP classes. They've got things riding on their, their education at this point. They're reaching the end of their education. They're jumping back between 30 minutes and 45 minutes seems a little illogical. Is there a reason that we can't have 45, if some kids can do it sometimes, why can't all of them do 45 minute classes at home all the time?
Yeah, good question. What that, what allows us to do is provide extra time on, on these days, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and also the Wednesday for K through three is also gives an additional time for our teachers to work more specifically with students who are remaining at home with their office hours at the end of the day. And then also jumping between these models is quite cumbersome on the instructional side and does provide a little bit of extra time, not a ton of extra time for our teachers to plan and prepare. But they do need that time to be able to plan materials for individual situations for, for our students as well to make sure that they still have a solid product out there. And I, I recognize that going back and forth does sometimes create a little bit of inconsistency, but at the same time, we're trying to do as, as much consistency also as possible. And as with, with many decisions, whether they're from the district level or even from the state level, there's some decisions that, that can be poked holes on that look inconsistent at times and don't seem to make sense. But that's, that's the rationale that, that we ran with on, when offering that, that model.
So my other question is, and we, you already touched on a little bit, that we are asking an awful lot of our teachers. And teacher, that our teachers right now are expected to do so many things and handle so much. And in the current climate, there are people who do not want to follow mask rules. Who's at fault to, to enforce this, to enforce the rules, to enforce that kids are washing their hands, that are keeping their distance, that are wearing their masks? What kind of, what, what are the repercussions? Has, has this been thought out, talked about? Is, what's the plan for that?
Well, yeah, the, the mask rule is not wearing a mask in a, in a schoolhouse where you have lots of people in confined areas, which those are things that at the community level, we've been told be extremely cautious with. And that's why we need to be extremely cautious with it. And we need to be extremely aggressive with, with our masking expectations and wearing that mask is, it's a dress code. And not wearing that mask creates a safety issue for the general well being of everyone else in the schoolhouse. So those students will be asked to, to go home. And if they, they can't wear a mask, then we have that instructional model that's at home that, that's certainly very easy to use. So yeah, the expectation is for, for all of our students to have that mask on.
One last part, and then I will let somebody else go. So just so I understood you correctly, if someone comes down with COVID and they, you do the contact tracing, you will or won't require people who were in close contact with them to quarantine?
Both. It, it depends. We'll be, we'll be in close contact with Allegheny County Health Department. They go through a series of questions and they will ask very specific types of scenarios as far as where was the child, where were they, who were they sitting next to? What was the distance between those children? Were they masked? What did the lunchroom look like? So they will ask a lot of specific questions and they will tell us whether or not that the other children, whether or not they need to quarantine or not. And in the event where other children need to quarantine, our parents will get basically a form letter that will share information that your child may have been exposed to an individual with COVID and that they will be quarantined then for 14 days and asked to, asked to remain at home during that time. So it, it'll depend. It really will. But we'll be very clearly communicating with, with parents if your child's in that situation where and basically the rule is for that, for contact tracing is longer than a 15 minute period of time at a distance of less than six feet that they have had exposure to someone. And those are some of the things that the Allegheny County takes into consideration when making determinations of quarantine.
Okay, I lied. One last question. What happens if the teacher gets sick?
We, we, we do our best to take care of them. So if a teacher does become ill, they, they take time off. We get a substitute in to come in and, and teach. And those naturally, those are the struggles that many schools are having right now is, is in the event a teacher does get ill. If multiple teachers get ill, and so that's a, it's a threshold of where same thing with students is we need to be able to make the decision is can we still offer the product that we're offering with the number of teachers that we have on staff? So it may, may come to a point that if you get a lot of people that, that are ill at a certain time, that's the, the tilting point when, when you have to close your schools down again. So it's, it's not something that we've seen in some local area schools. They've been, continued to, to remain open for the most part. But yeah, it, it, nothing is clearly written in stone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next will be Eric Valchev. You are permitted to speak. Just unmute yourself.
Well, hello. I just typed in my question. I'm so sorry. I'll be redundant then. This is Eric Valchev, 78 Belvedere Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Doc to elaborate a little bit about the just how you're going to go about assuring the well being of the kids from a social emotional perspective. Are you going to do surveys? Are you gonna, you know, how are you going to gain their feedback? This is awesome. I, I just want to comment. The plan, the plan's great. It's making the most and the best of a very tough situation for everyone to think through. And you guys have, have, have really thought through as many options as you possibly can. So way to go. If you could comment on that and if you could look to my, my question later for a plug about the, the London property, it's not relevant to what's the conversation now. So I'll, 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 I'll kind of mute now and appreciate Doc. Can you talk a little bit about how you look to collect the feedback of the kids in school?
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right, Eric, that collecting feedback from our students as far as their social emotional well being is extremely important. Especially at this time. I think we do that throughout courses of regular school year. And I think we have been asking a lot, a lot from our teachers in regard to doing a lot of different things. But working with our, our school psychologists that we have available to us, working with our school counselor who will, at the elementary level, be teaching lessons at, to all of our students throughout the course of the school year. I think provide us with a great opportunity to collect additional data from, from our students. We also at Carnegie, we have the Chill Room that runs a lot of different programs to help support with mindfulness types of activities as well as social emotional well being as well. So I think the data will be collected from multiple sources and then collected and gone through by, at the local, at the building level by our principals and by our teachers to help take a look at are there, are there other gaps? And these are things that we started to take a look at the end of the last school year with our, our teaching staff. Took a look at all the different types of gaps we would anticipate for instructional needs during the school year as well. So being able to take time to go through that and reevaluate are there different services that, that our children will need based on the feedback that we get. But as far as a formal surveying method, we don't have necessarily a formal type of survey. We will have some more formal surveying coming out of a project that we're working on with the Chill Program that will take a look at some social emotional needs that we are going to offer to, to all of our students as well. That data won't be as readily available to us and it won't be on a constant type of basis. But it will take a holistic approach to, to how students are doing.
Moving on to Erin Manifold. You are permitted to speak at this time.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everybody. My name's Erin Manifold. I live at 415 and a half Center Avenue. And I'm kind of speaking out of concern for two particular subgroups of individuals and the first one being the teachers. And I just want to know how are, you know, teachers being provided support? When I think about the model that is going into place, you said that 20% of, you know, students would most, would not be coming back or aren't comfortable coming back. So that is a, you know, substantial percentage of students that will remain online. So the teachers are teaching all day in their classroom with students, with a full group of students. But because they have that subgroup of the online students, they are then going to be expected to create and upload instructional materials. You know, and that doesn't even take into consideration the planning for the face to face instruction that they're going to have to do. Not to mention the grading that they're going to have to do on top of that. And when, you know, when I hear the kids might be in the classroom for lunch and that the related arts staff will be coming into the classrooms, I'm wondering if teachers are going to get, you know, an ample lunch period and a prep period. And I know you mentioned shortening the schedule to have office hours at the end of the day. But I'm just wondering how, you know, we're expecting teachers to do this much and still provide a quality piece to the students that are, you know, choosing to stay remote. And that is the other, you know, subgroup that as I'm thinking about this plan, you know, I'm concerned about that subgroup of students that are choosing to stay online. You know, they're so used to consistent five days a week live instruction. It's been wonderful. My daughter's had such a great experience. And just to think about that ending and just going to, you know, her viewing videos or whatever, it's just, it's not going to be the same experience. And so I don't know how many students are at each grade level, you know, that are staying remote, but I, I don't know if you've entertained the idea of looking at grade level online teachers just to lighten the teacher's load and provide something quality for the online students. So yeah, I, I am concerned about how this is all going to work out for the teachers. I'm concerned about their mental and emotional health. I'll be honest, I'm a teacher who's teaching online right now, full time, fifth grade. And it, I, I'm working longer hours than I ever have in 15 years. And to think about maintaining that online learning environment on top of teaching all day in a classroom, getting instructional materials prepared for that. And let's be real, you know, at the lower grade levels, these kids are all going to need their own sets of materials because, you know, nobody can share. So that's all going to fall on the teachers as well. So I guess I'm just, you know, seeking information and more detail about how the teachers are going to be supported. And because we can't expect teachers to give up all of their nights and weekends creating, even though we are right now. So how are teachers going to be supported? And how can we ensure that if we're choosing to stay remote, that we're going to that our kids are going to receive a quality education, knowing that their teachers are going to be stretched very, very, very thin?
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's very thoughtful of you to, to think about the staff. I know that they will, they'll certainly appreciate that because they have been, they've been working hard. And as you recognize They've been working hard and and as you recognize and and my thanks to you for for being a teacher and in public education. Greatly appreciate everything you've done for for kids over the years. And part of the the model that we put into place was also designed to keep consistency among our students, but then also to create some consistency. And some supports in place for our staff as well. As part of the reason why we didn't move to to a hybrid model. In listening to other school districts and the challenges that a hybrid model creates. While it decreases the number of students in the in the classrooms at any given time. It increases the amount of. Just call it hecticness. Of scheduling and knowing who's going to be in class on a certain day and who's going to be learning from home on a certain day. And I think planning and preparation for a hybrid model. Creates even more taxing on our on our teachers. So. Part of the rationale for moving to a model of this nature is that the K through three level provide that at least that Wednesday. Where teachers do during that day have additional time. I believe you did mention also that the prep preparation time and lunch periods. And that is something we'll certainly continue to to abide by. They'll they'll certainly get their lunches and their preps. And then also on those days, the K through three, like I said, on Wednesdays, have some additional time. To work with students at home with their office hours at the end of the day. To help provide that instruction to students who may continue to have gaps who are learning remotely. And then for our four through twelve, they still have that Monday, Wednesday, Friday scenario where they have a little bit of extra prep time built in and then also. Time at the end of the day for office hours and work with students who are who are in the full remote. The the full remote area. So those are the types of things as far as accommodations and and support that we're putting in place. Also taking off. As as far as when we record the lessons. I'm sorry, live stream the lessons during the instructional day. I think that helps decrease a little bit of the of the workload. It's not as much. Uploading of content onto Google Sites, although it is still a significant amount of work. But it's not offering an asynchronous environment for all of our students who are learning from home, which. As you've recognized, requires a substantial amount of of planning and preparation. There are many schools that operate in in a full asynchronous environment and teachers playing in that way in a regular school day. So we are pushing staff to do and and plan for two different models, but we put those little supports in place where. That live stream model, I think, really helps the teachers be able to communicate with students at home and still have that opportunity for our kids to to engage.
Okay, thank you. I did have one more question too. I mean, is are there a lot of subs that Carlington has available? This is kind of, I thought of the question as the question was asked a few moments ago about, you know, when what happens when teachers get ill? I mean, does Carlington have building subs or, you know, people that are willing to sub? Because I know there's a major sub shortage right now because nobody wants to go in and be exposed to, you know. Thirty, fifty, however many random children during a day.
Yeah, certainly. There there's been a sub shortage over the the past few years. It's always been a challenge to get. Quality substitutes to come in and 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 work for us. We do work with with the subservice. Who does have staff members available to to substitute. We have some teachers who are going to be on leave this year for different reasons. We've started filling. Those positions already and believe we have a a pretty solid plan in place for our long term positions. And the day to day rates as far as getting in substitutes. It it could pose it could pose a could could pose a problem for sure. But those are things that we normally anticipate and and have to have. A structure in place and working with our subservice to help provide additional. Staff to come in and teach. But yeah, certainly, that that could be a problem.
And just one more thing. So if the school is coming back, you know, almost at a traditional model, at least with K to three. I mean, are other functions going to be starting to, you know, also meet face to face? If we feel comfortable enough to send our children into this environment, will there be, I mean, will. You know, board meetings and staff meetings and things of that nature also become face to face since we're fully confident that. Face to face is the right way?
Yes, and that's one thing that we talked about is as a in in board leadership is bringing back the. The face to face board meetings, which we're we're planning to do. The challenge there and it's it's one of those things that makes sense, doesn't make sense. As we're still restricted to internal gatherings of keeping those to less than twenty five. So board meetings, if we just had our 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 school board and our staff there. You're already at fifteen to seventeen people. And that would be able to invite in then maybe eight community members. So regardless of moving forward. For the to the near time future is offering some type of hybrid. Where we would have some board members participating from home, some board members participating. In the live session in the CCC. And then we will continue then to livestream and work with Zoom. And different types of technology to to help run board meetings in the future. Board meetings like this where we're coming out with a with a new instructional plan, we we tend to get a lot of people like tonight at a hundred fifty, hundred sixty people. In general, our board numbers have been a little bit lower. But we appreciate all the feedback and it's it's nice to see people here at board meetings and and being active. So we appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, next. Will be. This guest is noted as Moto E. So I don't know who you are, but you'll have to. Say your name and address, please. And you are permitted to speak at this time. Okay, you are still muted. Mute yourself. You will be permitted to speak. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Michelle Robb is next. You are allowed to speak at this time. Just have to unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Michelle Robb. I live at one twenty Edge Cliff Road, Carnegie. And actually, I had a couple of questions. One of which was. Regarding labs. So the older, like eleventh and twelfth graders, a lot of times with their sciences, they'll have labs incorporated with their sciences. My one daughter has, she's in the the chemistry, the college and high school chemistry. And her labs right now are Monday, Wednesday, which if we go back Tuesdays, Thursdays. She'll still be missing out on her two days of labs. And, you know, I mean, Carrie Badger has been doing an amazing job at doing labs for them. And they can observe them, but that's not quite them doing them themselves and working with the, you know, working with a partner. I didn't know if there was any way to fit that in. If they go back Tuesday, Thursday.
It's a challenge. It's it's a great question. It's one of the things we we took a look at and considered is is the lab work. And no matter what day you pick, whether it's Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Friday, to have kids come back and physically report. Labs are are offered on different days throughout the course of the week. I've been in Mrs. Badger's classroom when she's been offering instruction to our kids, and I agree, she does an outstanding job with the. With the kids. It's fun. It's it's fun to watch. But. Right now, I'll be honest with you, there's there's not a good strategy that we can put in place to replace those labs. It's gonna be a challenge. The most hopeful thing we can look for is that as we add in these Tuesday, Thursday days. Things go well, we can take a look at adding in Mondays and Fridays, and then at least you pick up a lab on on one of those days.
And then another question that I had to, oh, since we've been online for so long, I think. What we used to have an online grading system where we could log in and we could see. A detailed grade, everything that the teacher would put in under each student. That has since gone away and now there's a new grading system. I'm wondering if there's any way or if you have any idea on if that will be. Re, you know, put back into the system and if if any idea when?
Yeah, at the present time, we don't. We don't have the on live or online live grading available to parents or. Or to students as well. I'm not sure when that's gonna be able to be put into place, to be honest with you.
So I guess we just have to hold tight and and just hope it hope it comes through soon.
And keep your fingers crossed. There you go.
That's right. I did type in a couple of questions as well. One of which you had mentioned, like, if we could add in. The Monday or the Friday. Do you know how much leeway we would need? Could it be done like next week? We're gonna start on Monday or? Do we need time? We to advance to the next phase?
Yeah, the thing is, the the nice part is we're going from more restrictive to less restrictive. I think those kind of decisions could be made. A little bit quicker than what we've been providing over the past few iterations of making decisions where we've given two or three weeks. Notice. I don't think it would certainly be an announcement on Friday, hey, we're gonna have school on Monday now. I would look for at least a a good solid week's notice of, hey, the following week, we're gonna we're gonna add in these two instructional days or add in another day. Because like I said, you're moving from less or or more restrictive to less restrictive. Which I think the planning aspects at at home make it a little bit easier. But yeah, still get, I would say at least a week's notice.
And then one final question, and I'll be done. In the past, we were allowed, like a student could miss ten calendar. Days of school without being penalized in any way, shape or form. Now that we're gonna be having to be more diligent with signs, symptoms, all that we're looking out for. Has that number changed by the state or is it still held at ten?
State of Pennsylvania has provided us with latitude to adjust our attendance policy, and that's certainly something we have to do. For example, if if a child's quarantined for fourteen days. They can't control that. They they need to learn from home for fourteen days. Maybe some students potentially could be ill and for ten days can't even log on. Due to due to an illness. So there, yeah, we do have the latitude now to alter our attendance policy. And really working with attendance is also, it's it's also a challenge because as as some parents had mentioned. Their comfort level of attending and then not attending, that could that could ebb and flow. We'd like to see as much consistency as possible with with attendance. But I think we've recognized that. You know, that that we need to be able to to be able to work with kids and be able to provide that flexibility. On our end, it's it's a record keeping headache that we still need to report back to the state, but we want to continue to provide that flexibility to our kids.
Well, thank you. And I do, I thank you all for for taking the next step and getting the kids in the classrooms, which is really where they wanna be. And I know it's been a lot of work and a lot and a big challenge. So I do thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Courtney Bonnet. You are permitted to speak this time. You just will have to unmute.
Hi, this is Courtney Bonnet. I live at seventeen oh nine Crafton Boulevard. My question was, the kids are going back to school at full capacity on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But then Monday and Friday, you only have K through three. What's the logic of not having? The entire elementary school there the same the same days?
Are you talking, what, four through six also?
Yes, thank you.
Logic there is, there's there's several components to it. One, as far as the research that's out there in regard to children ages of of five to twelve. Are certainly the the lower transmission rates. And I think if we look. At Allegheny County, since the beginning of the school year, I wanna say it's about. Ages five to twelve represent, I think it's like three point two percent of overall cases in Allegheny County. The twelve to eighteen age group is a little bit higher. It's about double that at at seven point five percent. So our younger children are less at risk. That was part of the decision making process to to bring the K through three students back. And the four through twelve being a little bit at at a higher of a risk was another component to it. The two days a week gives us the opportunity to take a look at our safety strategies and make some changes in between while we don't have students in the building. And then also the other component to it is, we, like I mentioned before, we had sixty percent of our parents who were comfortable sending their children to school. And then they're in in a traditional model. And then there were forty percent that indicated on the survey that they weren't. Now, I think after. Hopefully, hearing this presentation and hopefully after we get things rolling a little bit that will. Increase that percentage. I'm projecting maybe seventy percent of our students will return when we start this program. But we also need to take into consideration everybody. And so being able to create that model. Where we still had that remote learning aspect. At home for that forty percent of our students who may potentially not show. We had to find that balance and. That's the rationale behind it.
So I think my biggest concern is, I know it was one of the questions you answered, is that this splits families a great deal. I know when you had spoken earlier, maybe in August, that it was going to be, you know, through household. Two days and then household the other two days. But with this. It's parents are now, you know, having Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, some Tuesday, Thursday, everything Wednesday. Different start times. Is the possibility of going back to households an option or no?
No, unfortunately, it won't be because of due to the households, it would. It wouldn't create that that staggered approach. For the keeping the the K through three as far as on the instructional side with the with the schedules. There's pros and cons. I and and I hear you as far as our model here. Nothing's perfect and not everything makes sense either.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is Robert Lee. You are permitted to speak at this time. You just have to unmute yourself.
Robert Lee, one oh five Railroad Avenue. My question is, is for the kids that are special ed and can't read. And are struggling very much to be doing this online learning and are failing. Are they gonna be punished for this?
In 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 what way do you mean punished?
They're gonna be held back or. I'm not really sure, like. Cause I I do have two special needs child children and they can't read. And it's been very difficult to get them to do this online learning because they can't read, they can't use a laptop. You need to be able to read or use a laptop.
Yeah, what what grade level are they at, sir?
Three and five, third and first, fifth.
Third and fifth. So the the third that that reaches within the K through three model that we're looking at of bringing the kids back to. At least the four days. That'll certainly increase the amount of face to face interaction and and hands on instruction. With the classroom teacher and the special education teacher. And also with the with the fifth grader, at least getting them back into the classroom for two days a week to help identify. Those areas of of weakness and struggle. And I agree with you a hundred percent. In order to learning online and and learning remotely. Can be a challenge, especially if reading is 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 more challenging. Because a lot of the content and a lot of the understanding does require students to read. And that's why as a district, we aim to have our students to be proficient by third grade. In areas of reading. And that's that's a goal that we have in place to so our students are prepared in the future. I would ask you to. And I'll make sure I write down your name and make sure that building level principal reaches out to you as well. If there are other. Strategies we can put in place to help your children, we'd certainly wanna do that. Reading is extremely important. So I mean. If I can get on a soapbox here and and talk to all the parents that are out there, read to your children, read to your children, read to them as much as you can. Take them to the library, get them as much exposure to literature as possible, especially at younger ages. Because it is, it's extremely important. So Mr. Lee, that's something that certainly I'm concerned about, and we'll try to get some some things in place to help your children.
That still doesn't answer the question of my child.
I'm sorry, I I apologize. As far as penalized, I think we can put some. Strategy in place, especially if if your children have individual educational plans. If they're trying and they're working hard, I don't see them being punished and being held back. If they're working and they're making progress on their individual goals that are outlined in their IEP. Then they most likely, they're not gonna be held back and punished.
Okay, well, that that's the first quote, the first part, but if the the my older child is in fifth grade. He still can't. And the problem I'm having is, is obviously he he has issues. And he's in fifth grade and still can't read up to his level. And you guys have had him for how many years now? And I can't get him to read at home either. So he's failing as well. And going back two days a week is not going to do a whole lot. Why can't he not go back to four days as well as the other?
Because right now, it's not, it's not a part of the recommendation for the the parts that I outlined before, just in regard to. The the transmission rates of the the twelve through eighteen year old students. And then just also looking at the, the phased in approach. But certainly five days is better than two, but two's better than zero. And I think we can make, make some progress there, make some headway. I'm hopeful that we can move through this and we experience success with all the mitigation strategies and work towards four to five days sooner rather than later. But yeah, to, to give you that real crisp, clear answer, it, it sounds like they do have some struggles in reading. And like I said, I'll, I'll follow up with, with Mrs. Bachman and, and see what types of, of programming we can put in place to put some remediation in place over time.
I hate, I hate to say this, you over a thing like this, but I've contacted a psychologist twice and I have not even received a, a call back over this.
Okay, reach out by email or by phone?
By phone. I've left two voicemails.
Okay, well, how recent was that?
Nah, the last one was two weeks ago.
Okay. Like I said, I'll work with Mrs. Bachman and we'll get moving on this starting tomorrow.
All right. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. John Coons Wyler, you are permitted to speak at this time.
John Coons Wyler, nineteen forty-five Crafton Boulevard. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
I was wondering, you guys haven't mentioned anything about Parkway. Students at a ten Parkway, you know, it's a, it's a technical school. Hands-on learning is pretty much, you know, they need that for sure. If they're enrolled in a trade, when are you going to let them go back five days a week there? You know, Parkway is welcoming students in five days. I'm just wondering when you folks are going to allow our kids to go back five days a week.
Hi, hi, this is, uh, this is Joe Apple. I'm the Parkway West Career Technical Center representative for Carleton.
Okay.
So right now Parkway is only offering in, in, in-person learning for two days a week. And so until that changes, we really can't send them four days a week because it's, um, it's, it's only two days. I, I know that Dr. Copeland is, is, is working on future plans as well. So hopefully sometime soon we'll have an update on, you know, how things are going and, and what and, and how many days a week we'll be able to have in-person learning. I totally agree with you. I think that it's really crucial, especially for the, you know, the more manual kind of things, but for all the kids out there to, to, to have in-person learning. So we're, we're working, working towards that for sure.
Well, thank you. My apologies. I was under the impression that they were, there was other schools that were attending five days a week.
Oh, no, 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 there's no, no, no.
I was under that impression and I'm sorry because I was misinformed, but you know, if they're only allowing two days, there's not that much you folks can do.
No, right now, no. And so let me ask, I was just typing in an answer to, it's an anonymous attendee on the question and answer. Was that you, sir, or?
Yes, I, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get on.
Okay.
Yeah. That was me.
I'll just, I'll just mark that as answered. So thanks for your question and you know, as information comes available, we'll be sure to get it out to the Parkway parents and students.
All right, great. Thanks so much. I appreciate your answer.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. And then as we're waiting for the next person, I can add that Parkway is looking to expand to a four-day model very soon. They have an, I want to say it's October twenty-ninth that they look to move to a four-day also. And that information will be forthcoming. That'll, that'll come directly from Parkway. As, as Mr. Apple had mentioned there, it's a, it's Parkway decision. They have their own health and safety plan as well. We follow through with that, but I, I do believe they're going to expand it to four days very soon.
Okay. Next up, we have Maria or Marie Corrado. You are unmuted or well, you're unallowed to speak. You have to unmute yourself. And Marie, if you are, if you are there, just go ahead and unmute yourself and you will be permitted to speak.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
Hey, this is Derek Stevens. We live at two nine four Crafton Boulevard. And I posted this question on the Q and A as well, and I was hoping to get clarification on the decision to go with the hybrid model to have the full amount of students coming back on those particular days, be it Tuesday, Thursday. My understanding of the goal of having a hybrid model would be to break up the amount of students that are in the place to allow for more social distancing and less crowding. So that, that actually seems kind of counterproductive, if, if that makes sense. So I was just hoping for, for better clarification on that.
Yeah. So the model that we're, we're moving, that I'm proposing we move into is not necessarily a hybrid. From what I said in the, in the very beginning, it has some elements of hybrid and some elements of traditional. And you are very correct with the rationale for moving in a hybrid direction is to have 50% building population, which does allow for greater social distancing and so on. But based on the transmission rates in the area, I believe that we were looking to, at least I'm looking to bring students back more in consistent basis in a traditional model. And with the model that's presented right now on the Tuesday, Thursdays, makes it easier to transition to a full traditional model simply by adding in days. The hybrid model would have again, like a, a Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday for, for students to report to school. Making that jump into the next level is another more significant change in, in the instructional model, which I was looking to avoid. So I think based on the, the data that I, I've seen and based on movements of other schools in the area, looking to bring back students full-time and full-capacity is starting to increase. And with the mitigation strategies that we have in place, I think we can do it safely to move that forward. So that's, it aligns with the goal of trying to get all of our students back to school.
Well, I appreciate your answer and I, and I appreciate all of the hard work. I would just say as an aside, the, the, the data that, that I look at every day from the Allegheny County Health Department seems to be opposite of, of, of what we should be doing or whether we should be going with this.
That's okay. The, there's data out there and there, there are some guidelines from Pennsylvania Department of Education. And they look at, they look at two different numbers with, with their models. And Allegheny County is, is not necessarily exactly, and you've seen this from World Health Organization to CDC to Allegheny County. People have their own interpretations. So there is some guidance out there and what they look at in general is they look at incident rate. And they also look at positivity rate. And so those are the, the two big numbers, the positivity rate, Allegheny County is looking for a number to be less than 5% and an incident rate to be somewhere around 10 to 20 in that area. One of the things I've been doing is tracking our three boroughs and taking a look at the number of tests that are issued. And then also the number of, of positive numbers that have been coming back. Based on our demographics, Crafton having a population of about 6,000, Carnegie having a population of about 8,000, Rosson Farms being at about 500. Our positivity rates, which is basically the number of tests that hit positive, divided by the total number of tests given, is varies between five to seven percent in each of our three communities. And then our incident rate is right around 12 or 13. So when looking at those numbers and that, that number is a holistic number since March. It's not looking at, at the numbers most recently. And as we've seen, numbers have started to, to decline. They take a little bit of a step up and then they go back down. But looking more specifically at those numbers that are the ones that, that I'm tracking off of the Allegheny County website that, that is updated daily.
Thank you for clarifying that. And if I could just have one more question real quick, is there a testing protocol for teachers and specifically for substitute teachers who might be coming in from another district?
So testing protocols, all we basically have is we have the, the screening protocols. But we do not have COVID testing in place for teachers. I don't think any, anybody really has that, to be honest with you, as far as instructional staff. But we do ask teachers to, to self-monitor their systems, symptoms on a weekly, daily basis. We put those reminders out occasionally. And as far as incidents and, and issues that we've had with employees, we've, we've been very fortunate.
Well, let's hope it stays that way. And again, thank you so much for all your hard work and, and for answering my questions. Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we have Jenna Hickling. You are permitted to speak at this time.
Hello. This is Augustine Hannover and I live at eighty-five North Emily Street. Jenna, Gina Hickling is my mom.
Okay.
I'm in sixth grade and I wanted to say, I know people were complaining about like everybody going back to school and like the coronavirus, but I don't know if they realized how much of a pain the online learning is.
And that's, that, that's feedback that, that we've, we've tried to get from, from our students and also from our parents. And I fielded a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls from concerned parents. In many cases, it, it's been very positive experiences that people have been having. But there are students who struggle with the online environment. And obviously you're, you're one of those based on what, what you shared here. Is that online learning can be, it can be a challenge. And so what we're looking to do, especially with our sixth graders is, is get you back at least two days a week and look to expand on that model and hopefully see you back four to five days a week here in the near future. But really appreciate you joining us here.
Yeah. So I was, I was eating dinner.
Nice. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Bye.
And last but not least, we'll try again with Moto E. You are permitted to speak. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Laurie Bean and I live at one Roslin Road, Carnegie. I always wanted to kind of tag team on the mystery. And I heard your statistics and you had said up to age 12 has the least amount of transmission, which is true. I work in healthcare field, so those are true statistics. Most sixth graders go up to the age of 12. So I'm really having a hard time understanding why four through sixth is excluded based on the information you gave us that is kind of contraindicated in what you were saying. Secondly, I do have a learning challenged child who is struggling with reading, is streamlined in social studies and science, which requires tremendous amount of work on the parent's end to provide them with that educational experience. I know in her special education class that she's with Mr. Harwitz and I do have to say he does a phenomenal job. She has brought, brought her a very long distance in her reading and I am utmostly grateful for that. But with her being online, that is required tremendous amount of time on my end. Hours of instructional assistance because in science and social studies, they give them things to read. And then they have to answer questions and they have to spell things out. And when you have somebody that's having those difficulties, there's a handful of children I know that are fourth through sixth grade. I, I don't understand why they could not handle a handful of children to come back into the classroom where they need that assistance.
Yeah. So the part of the rationale with the, the break at the K through three and four through six at the present time is again, it, it's phasing things and it's being able to take a look at our safety model. We want to do this in the safest way possible. But at the same time, we also want to take a look at getting students more educational services for the reasons that you and Mr. Lee outlined, which I agree with a hundred percent. So as far as drawing that line between there, it, it provides us the opportunity to take a look at our safety strategies and to again, our, our focus here in the very beginning was to take a look at the elementary level to increase that instructional time. And we look to, to increase that. If things go well, which I, I'm projecting, I'm very hopeful that they will, we'll be able to add in instructional days pretty quickly. And if, if things are going really well, we can add two days at a time. If we're not assured, it'll be an extra day at a time. But that's where we'll take a look at and measure our progress and see how things are going.
I guess my thought is, is these children, there's probably 10 that are fourth through sixth that are special education children that are in that district. And they're being held behind or left behind because of this model. And because they've been homeschooled. We did participate in the summer program. We did that online. It, it, there are times me and my daughter up till midnight doing homework online. Because I have to be available when I'm working 12 to 14 hours a day. There isn't somebody there that's going to sit there at home in the evening that can do those things with her. So she has to wait till I get home. And she's being left behind and I'm very concerned about that. And it, it is the district's responsibility to provide them with that education. And I don't feel that this model is meeting their needs. If there's 10 kids, I can't imagine that, that's, that 10 kids are going to put the whole school safety at risk.
Now, there, well, just to, to address it, there's more than 10. I'm not sure where you're getting the number 10 from. But would you agree that we're moving in the right direction?
Yes, they need back in school, period.
And, and quite honestly, that's what we're looking to do. We're trying to move in that direction, get the kids back into school.
For special education students, two days a week is clearly not enough.
Well, the purpose of, of, of this session right now is to provide the board with, with feedback prior to them voting on the plan that, that I outlined. And I'll agree with you a hundred percent. The more face-to-face instruction we can get with our kids, the better. And we are, I designed this model to, to help move in that direction as quickly as and safely as we can.
I appreciate that. Hopefully they can get back very soon.
I'm with you. Yep, I'm right there with you. I agree.
Hi, this is, this is Dr. Mendoza. I'm kind of curious based on things that she's talking about. So it sounds like her child, her student is a student who might be in learning support and has an IEP. My understanding that I thought was regardless of what model we're in, our special education students are supposed to be receiving their service minutes in some form. So they shouldn't be getting standard curriculum, but it should be in accordance to their IEP. Does that make sense? And I'm, the way it sounds though, it's concerning me that it doesn't sound like that's happening. I don't know if there's, I know teachers have their office hours at the end of the day, but I'm, I'm would be thinking like the special education teachers would be fulfilling their service minutes. So the students should be getting the same amount of support as if they were live. And I get the difference between live and remote. But as a school psychologist, that, and both my kids also are special education. So those issues are really important to me. So when I hear these kinds of comments, it, it's concerning. So I, I, I would like that to be looked at. I mean, I would support that. That's something that needs to be focused on. As far as the model, some of the questions talking about why is it K through three and not the entire elementary school, it's a mix of different factors. But part of it too is that I was looking at was like K through C through three, those are students who are still learning how to learn. So it's not just them learning content. So that's why they're getting in this first phase. Everything's a phase. But in this first phase, we're putting the students, them and special, students with special education needs at the beginning of this phasing. So I'm hoping the public understands this. This is a full phasing thing and we're trying to get there. And if we do all our protocols right, we can get there faster.
Yeah. And so some good points there. I don't know, Mrs. Hoffman, if you wanted to add anything in, in regard to the special education services that are being provided. We are providing the services and I also Dr. Mendoza, as you had mentioned, the parish too, is that it, it does create a challenge to learning remotely. But as far as services being provided, Mrs. Hoffman, I'm not sure if you wanted to make any comments on that.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, if there's any individual questions or concerns, I have replied back to some people in the chat and some families have reached out to me. Please contact me. And some families have reached out to me. Um, please contact me um, individually. That way, you know, we don't have to put everyone's business out there. But uh, students are still receiving services as per their IEP. If there are specific concerns, I would absolutely address them um, on an individual basis.
Okay, Mr. Jones, looks like we have uh, two final questions here.
Yes. Um, Bridget Cofield, you are good to speak now. You can just unmute your microphone.
Evening. Uh, thank you for your updates. I had um, really a follow-up to one of the answers relating to. The uh, Allegheny County numbers and how you're looking at those for your um, phasing in approach. Uh, particularly, do you have a range that you're looking at from a positivity rate? Um, you mentioned overall being five to seven percent. Is there a cutoff rate that you would um. Be looking to transition um, in a different direction um, back to remote as an example. And the second part is, is this phase um, going through the Thanksgiving holiday and then a pivot? Or do you have a timeframe um, that you were going to recommend this phase be uh, be in place?
Yeah, good questions. Yeah, good questions there as far as timeframe and, and making decisions. Um, as far as making decisions on the positivity rates, um, very much the same as uh, Allegheny County. We don't necessarily have a, an exact number uh, to pinpoint down. That number is going to change from, from one week to the next, as you know, just based on a seven-day average. Um, but the rationale for, for stepping in this direction is because those numbers have come down. Um, and does come to a safe level where we can get students back into the schoolhouse. And then i- as far as staying in this model, um, I would say Thanksgiving. We would definitely maintain this model up to Thanksgiving. Um, and then after that, taking a look at, at uh, that making some changes after the break. Um, and different things that we'll look at. One, we'll, we'll look at the, the rates in the community. We'll look at rates in the schoolhouse. Um, we'll collaborate with Allegheny County to, to see what their, their impressions are. Um, we don't, uh, they don't necessarily call the shots on everything, but they give us advice and recommendations that we listen to. Um, but nothing firm. I think if we, if we narrow ourselves into um, firm, hard, fast numbers, I think it, it limits things. Because as you know, there's a lot of different considerations with, with COVID and there's different situations and circumstances, especially with. With positivity rates or positivity rate, we could get, we can get five hits um, in our school district from, from students on, on a given day. And if you look at that from one standpoint, say, boy, five people got COVID on one day, um, that would look pretty bad. But when you look at the specific details, it could be five people from the same family or it could be uh, five people split between uh, two people that, that live right next door to each other and share time with each other. Um, so those are things that we have to take in consideration also instead of just flat numbers.
Uh, thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate it. And thank you for all the work that you've done relating to the phased-in approach.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jenna Hickling. You are permitted to speak. Oh, yep.
Hello. Uh, I wanted to say that, oh yeah, I'm, I'm Augustine Hanover and I'm a child in sixth grade. I wanted to say the teachers are actually doing very well and trying their best to make everything work. And I was wondering, nobody's been able to answer this question. Like there, I heard there's from the seventh graders that there's like a Halloween party. That's not happening, right?
That, that's correct. And I, I think uh, whoever your teacher is, I think you probably just got some bonus points for throwing them a shout out. So that's terrific. And um, but no. There you go. Um, but uh, no, a- as far as uh, different types of things coming back, we are coming back right before uh, before Halloween. But as far as Halloween celebrations and, and bringing in candy and doing things like that, uh, we're going to ask families to have those celebrations at home as opposed to inside school.
Okay, thank.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is going to be Robert Lee. You can go ahead and speak.
Um, sorry to interrupt again, but uh, my, my question is, is you keep saying it's part of, you know, the phase. But for the IEP kids, I, I don't see where there's a cutoff as to what grade they're in. If they're IEP, they're IEP. They need special assistance to help learn and you guys are just deciding on an age group. That now you don't qualify to learn because of your age, but if you're younger, you do. And it doesn't make any sense to me at all how that is to be.
Yeah, that's where um, as far as what, what we provided up to this point, our teachers are, they're, they're still teaching. Uh, they're still reaching out to our students uh, with individualized educational programs. And there are some that, that continue to struggle. There are some of our students uh, who have IEPs that are being successful and there's others that, that are not. And we are, we're moving in a direction where we're trying to get more face-to-face instruction. And certainly this is uh, it's challenging, challenging environment to, to provide that.
I understand you're trying, but you're trying at my children's expense.
And.
Uh, I mean, one, one's going to get to go four days a week and the other one's only going two days a week. And clearly they both need as much as they can get. And they're just being left behind, both of them.
I'd make that argument.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's not anything that the uh, special ed teachers are doing, that they're doing phenomenal jobs. It's just this online is not working for them.
And that's what we recognize that it, it's working for some, it's not working for others. And that's why we're putting a model in place to. Get kids back into the, into the schoolhouse and looking at safely transitioning it in from, from one model to the next. As I mentioned.
How does, how does age determine it? I, I don't understand that. I mean, if they're IEP, they're IEP.
Yeah, as far as the age, yep. Look at it from a scheduling per, perspective with. Teachers who are available to teach face-to-face uh, with students and then also being able to uh, to work with students who are, who are online. So the solution is, is not just to take a look at, at the IEP students and bring all of them back. The solution is to bring everybody back uh, five days a week. And that would be K through twelve because we have students um, with specific learning needs at, at the senior high school as well. Um, that we want to also get them back in for instruction as well. So. It's, we need to move towards a model where we're getting students more face-to-face interaction with our students or with our teachers.
So the kids that are performing well on the computers, they're just fine. But the kids that are not are just going to be, they're just going to fall behind and it's going to be what it is. That's my concern is there's nothing for them to ever catch up. They're just falling more behind and they were already.
Well, what we also will have is with our special education department, special education teachers, it's the, there uh, there are requirements for us to, to put into place to take a look at. Uh, regression models over time. So as students come back into the schoolhouse, we uh, we assess their current level of understanding on a variety of topics. If we recognize that there's been regression in reading or regression in math or regression in one of their IEP goals. Uh, what we will look to do is provide additional instruction uh, outside the regular school day, uh, possibly during the school year or over the summer. In addition to the extended school year and other options that we, that we currently offer. Um, to build the capacity of those students who we've, who have, not we feel, who we have documented, who have regressed over time due to school closures. Uh, in relationship to COVID. So those are things also that we'll take a look at in regard to our special need population as well.
But okay, so what you're saying is, is the kids with the IEPs are going to have to have longer school days or extra school days. Versus a kid that doesn't have an IEP. Cause right now my youngest, he's in school from eight-thirty till almost three o'clock every day as it is. When everyone else is out at two-thirty, two o'clock.
And it won't necessarily be, like I said, during the, the school year itself. It could also be over the summer. And it's a, it's at what point do we need to make sure, you know, it's, it's the importance of, we're certainly going to work to get them back up to speed. During the course of the school year as well, during regular instructional hours. Uh, but then also try to capitalize on, on additional time potentially in the summer as well.
I, I really don't see that being fair at all. I really don't.
Okay. Uh, let me read down through some other, other questions that were, that were posed here. Uh, K to three teachers being teaching classes remotely in person at the same time, seeing other schools to do this. Um, those are the components there as far as the difference between a hybrid model and the model that we're using is uh. It, it decreases the balance of the hecticness in the classroom when you're teaching both students online uh, and, and in the classroom as well. It's a little bit more of a consistent model that, that we have for our teachers to, to be able to, to balance that out. Other types of strategies, as soon as we get the students back into the classroom, we'll be able to help fill in some of those learning gaps that were, that were previously discussed. Um, will learning from home be any different than what it is currently? All depends on what day it is of the week. That's looking at Monday, Wednesday and Friday at the high school level and four through twelve will be the same. Um, and even during the day when, when other classes are meeting, uh, should be pretty similar with that live streaming model in there. It will not be as much focused to the students that, that are at home, uh, but will provide uh, great opportunities. Class sizes, they certainly vary from uh, one grade level to the next. I know some are grade levels. Uh, kindergarten is uh, maybe fifteen to seventeen. We do have some second grade classes that uh, are up to twenty-four. If we take a look inside some of those classes though, they are separated it. Uh, at five feet, looking at some of the uh, classrooms that, that I've seen. Um, the plan being effective here will make changes. It's not necessarily set in stone for a certain amount of time. And I think that covers pretty much all the, all the questions that, that uh, that we didn't cover. I don't see any other people with their, their hand raised at this time. Um, thank you for the questions. Greatly appreciated. Thank you for the comments. Thank you for the input. Um, as I said previously, as we move through these times, um, there's not one single model out there that is uh, proven to be. The most effective, the least effective. It's what works for your community and the proposal that I'm putting in, in front of the board this evening. Is trying to take advantage of the needs of our community, the needs of our individual students. And try to move forward with a model that, that gets students back into class. So I'll turn things back over to uh, Mr. Schreiber to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kreider. And thank you for everybody for sharing your input. Um, as I was hearing some of the comments, I, I think we all recognize that. This is not a ideal situation and I appreciate everybody's flexibility and patience and. I hope you sense that the district is desperate to get all the kids back in the buildings as soon as possible. So that's our collective goal. Dr. Kreider is aimed at that and the staff is aimed at that. We're trying to do it as safely as we can. So um, as many of you have, if you've got specific situations that you think you need help, please reach out to the staff. Um, to get some help. But thank you. Thanks, everybody. And thanks, Dr. Kreider.
Thank you, sir.
Um, if, if no other board member objects, are we ready to move on to um. The, the voting part of meeting, go into the section three miscellaneous and vote on the uh, on the plan? Everybody okay? Um, then I will entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh, that opening plan that Dr. Kreider just outlined. Um, and if there are any board member that have comments on it, we can make those comments and ask questions after the, after the motion's been made. So aim, any motion for that, for that item?
I assume.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
This, this is Director Apple. Um, I, I'd, I'd like to just also thank uh, our administration, Dr. Kreider and the administration for. Um, I know they put a ton of work and time into this and, and thought and um. The menu of, of options and none of them are, are really ideal. Um, and, and I think that um. I think that we're, we're well-led here and I'm grateful for the, the um, the plan that we have that we're just about to vote on. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. And Dr. Kreider, I would quickly comment that I, I agree with um, or I sympathize with and I can understand some of the concerns that our residents shared. And it sounds like you did as well. So my uh, additional request would be to, to continue to pay attention to those kids that. Maybe are not doing as well with the online instruction and try to help them uh, as much as we can. I, I know we're doing that already. So I'll, I'll just add that comment.
Yes, and, and we will. Thank you.
If there's no other comments or, or questions, we'll, we'll make a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, under section four personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recall from furlough of the attached uh, members of the bargaining unit. I believe there's fifteen people, Dr. Kreider in the attachment um, from the secretary cafeteria aides, collective bargaining unit. And the cafeteria workers uh, for lunchroom playground aides. I have a motion to approve that item for recalling the fifteen uh, members.
I assume.
Moved by the second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, under section five, old business, did any director have any old business they would like to bring up? If not, any new business, any director have any new business they'd like to discuss? If not, move on to open forum. Any members of the community have additional questions in the open forum section? Mr. Jones, is there anybody raising their hand?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Dr. Kreider, it sounds like we're complete. Do you have any last comments or, or questions?
No, nothing final. Um, once again, a, a big appreciation out to all of our staff members, our support staff, our teachers, uh, school board and. Our families and, and our students as well for all of their support uh, throughout the past several months. And we look to, to move forward uh, with a productive model, taking into consideration all the feedback that we received this evening. Um, and uh, look to put some, some outstanding services in place for our students.
Wonderful. Thank you. If there's no other business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the board.
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?